We'll call our meeting to order. Thank you for joining us. We are so excited to see such a grand turnout. I know it's because we have consent, but no, I'm sure it's our big discussion item this evening. So with that, we will get started. Roll call, Mrs. Nels.
Yes, Madam President, all members of the Board are present and we have a quorum.
Wonderful. If you'd please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. We have Graham Hatfield, the Star Scout with Troop 131 with us, and he's going to lead us in the pledge.
Please join me in the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we have our district update, our spotlight on excellence, and Dr. Wall is going to meet us at the podium to introduce our excellent spotlight this evening.
Thank you, Leila. We're very fortunate to be spotlighting some true excellence in the midst of Carmel High School. Amy Bilquist is with us tonight. She's a Carmel High School swimmer, and her mother and father are here too. Thank you for attending this evening, supporting your daughter. We appreciate it. I'd like to invite Coach Chris Plum up to the microphone. Tell us a little bit about Amy. I was fortunate to get to meet Amy on my radio-TV show a couple of weeks ago, and she told me a little bit about her past, coming from Arizona to Carmel, to swimming in Qatar recently. So I'll let Coach Plum fill in the blanks.
Coach, thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me and us tonight. I have the proud honor to present to you a young woman who moved to us from Arizona last September, and you know, it's been quite an experience. And when she first came to us, we had this very tall, really skinny girl, and she wasn't sure what she was getting into, but over time, we've developed a great relationship. It's getting better as we go. And Amy has improved dramatically over the past year, so much so that she was selected as a junior Pan Pac athlete and was a junior Pan Pac champion in multiple events and a world record holder, and that took place in Hawaii. And most recently, she represented the United States at the World Short Course, the Short Course World Championships in Cutter, Doha Cutter. And there, Amy won three medals, a silver, and two silvers and a gold, and is an American record holder. So I don't, there's been one other girl I know from Carmel who's been an American record holder, and Amy's now the second. And I think she exemplifies everything that we want in our athletes. She's passionate, she works hard, does a great job in the school and in the pool, and is captain of the team. And we look for her to lead the way as the girls try and to attempt to win their 29th high schools state championship in a couple of weeks. So that will be a national tying record with a team from Hawaii. So I present to you Ms. Amy Bilquist.
Thank you all for having me here today. It's such an honor to be here, and I just want to say thank you for inviting me into such an amazing community, and I couldn't have asked for a better place to move. And the students at the school have just been so nice and so accepting to me, and I just really feel blessed with all the opportunities I've had here and to have meet Chris and Ian and to have them help me get to where I am today. I mean, I couldn't have asked for better coaches. I'm just so honored. And while I was in Cutter, I really figured out who I was as a person and as an athlete. It was very intimidating standing next to world record holders and Olympians and being like, "I'm a senior in high school. They don't have zits like I do." I don't know what to do. And so I was just really out of my element, but I was so honored to have Chris be selected as a coach there. He was there to really help me relax and calm down and just really take in the whole experience, and it was amazing. Swimming with Natalie Coghlan on relays was just out of this world. And when I was selected to swim in finals for the American relay, we were going up against the Netherlands, and they were supposed to blow us out of the water. Like, we weren't even supposed to be close at all, and I was the anchor relay, and we were going in with a slight lead, and the Netherlands had the world record holder on the end, and I couldn't hold her off, but we came in with a strong second. And I just, it was awesome getting out of the pool and just hugging Team USA and standing on the podium and just watching our flag be raised into the air just really was the most amazing experience I have ever had, and I couldn't have asked for a better one. And I just wanted to really thank Chris and Ian for all the hard work they've put into me. I can be a handful sometimes, as most teenage girls can be, but I really can't thank them enough for sticking with me and really teaching me self-confidence and just the willingness to work hard and just love what you do. It's a great thing, and I just wanted to thank you all for being here and thank you for having me. Go Carmel.
Thanks for being here tonight. We have one more spotlight on excellence. It's not on the agenda, but we're going to squeeze it in there. We were very fortunate to be a host site for Rise Above the Mark documentary last week at Carmel High School. That was co-hosted with the Carmel Clay Education Association, CCEA, President Brian Leida in the back. Brian, thank you for your efforts, not only as the emcee of the event, but your membership for coordinating and working with us. The Board of Education, thank you for being a part of this special evening and for jumping on to be a part of a night that really was shining the light on public education, as well as the Carmel Education Foundation and Carmel Clay School Administration. It was a joint effort of showing what we can do and how we can be effective conveying the message of public schools to our community. We had a very strong attendance at this event. I thank Jennifer Schwab, our Community Relations Liaison, and Dana Kendall, my Administrative Assistant, for all their efforts in organizing and planning and then executing the event. But we had well over 300, we're guessing 300 to 500 people in attendance, which at an event like that, I think is a very positive result. And for those of you that want to have a follow-up, what can we do about this thing called public education and shine the light and give our legislators some information about finding some way to take this thing in Indiana we call funding and look at some equitable way of doing this long-term so it doesn't put communities in a constant cycle of referendum just to operate? As most of us know in this room, barring any unforeseen changes in the current funding formula, we'll be looking at a referendum in 2017 just to operate. 2010, you as taxpayers stood up and passed a referendum to maintain the current program offerings in Carmel Clay Schools. Again, absent any significant changes in the funding formula, we'll be looking at that in 2017 just to sustain and maintain what we have. We have a call to action on the table where you came in by the agendas. We invite you to grab one of those. It's just a message to our legislators that we want to be part of the solution and be part of how we can work with them to find a remedy that is sustainable and long-term as we look at taking care of our public schools. Those of us that were in attendance last week really got to see a documentary shining the light on what happens when some of the public money that you all, we all contribute to our schools gets funneled away into vouchers and to private and the concerns that we have for that as we try to maintain this foundational, very important entity to our society called the public school. So we invite you to pick up a call to action on your way out. Again, thank you to the Board, CCEA, the Foundation Administration, for working together and showing the community that together we can make a difference, and I believe we have and will continue to make a difference, not only at Carmel Clay Schools but statewide. We continue to meet with our legislators, and we're going to, we've reached out to have more meetings to continue to send the message that the Board has with their legislative priorities, which are on the call to action. So please take a look at those, and if you have any follow-up questions later in the week or whenever, please drop me a note, and I'll be happy to correspond. But thanks for being here this evening, and thank you to the Board for allowing this event to take place.
Thank you very much, Dr. Wall. And to reiterate what Dr. Wall had said, we were so excited to see such a wonderful response from the community to be engaged in what we can do as a community to support public education. With that, we'll move into public participation. Since we have, we do not have any interested in participating at this time, we'll move right into consent. May I make a motion to approve consent?
So move.
Second?
Favor.
Yes.
Wait just a second.
I can? Okay. Pam moved.
Okay.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Moving on to discussion, we have a number of different policies that we'll be reviewing, and as part of the Policy Committee, Pam Nels is going to lead us on this. Pam?
Yes. First up is Policy 7450, Property Inventory. We checked with Mr. McMichael on this one to find out what we needed to say on this particular policy, and he checked with the State Board of Accounts Manual to find out specific numbers that we might need in this policy. It is not in Indiana code that needs to be in policy, but it is because of the State Board of Accounts Manual. And so we have added statements in paragraph number two specifically talking about the value of the equipment being $5,000 or more, and then it will be inventoried. And we changed assistant to associate superintendent since we have changed the title, and that was in the last two paragraphs.
Thank you, Pam. Any questions or discussion on this particular policy? Okay, next.
Next, we have a list of policies that we are recommending to be deleted. There would be Policy 6110, Federal Funds, Policy 6450, Local Purchasing, Policy 7240, Site Acquisition, Policy 7300, Disposition of Real Property, Policy 7310, Disposition of Surplus Property, Policy 7550, which is Joint Use of Facilities, and Policy 8430, which is Bomb Threat. As we were looking at policies and going back through and also getting a recommendation from Dr. Wall, we have found that all of these policies are in code, and these policies are just a restatement of what is in code. And we have been trying to consolidate our policies to alleviate the expansive numbers of policies that we have, and so if this is already in code and we have to follow it, then there's no point, we felt there was no point in restating code. So those are being recommended for deletion.
I just want to add, Pam, also on 8430, the bomb threat, although it is not, that one isn't necessarily in code, it is fully addressed in Policy 8420. Yes. When it talks about emergency evacuations and the procedures that we take. And I know Dr. Wall has worked with the administration to develop administrative guidelines for that particular policy as well. Right. Okay. Any other questions or discussion items on these? Okay. Thank you very much. Next, we have our report, our very big report from ECR this evening, so we're very happy that you're joining us, Ms. Gina. Go ahead, Dr. Wall.
Thank you, Leila. Just to kind of put this in the context for the Board, as we discussed last spring in preparation for goals for this 2014-15 school year, one of the things that we had talked about was having a strategic plan for Carmel Clay Schools. Carmel Clay Schools has a vision statement that's behind us that has been validated by the Board of Education Administration Community through goal-setting meetings that I conducted last year. We have a mission statement. One of the things that we were very mindful of is that we didn't have a long-range strategic plan, and we knew that. And my suggestion was, last spring and as we went into the planning stages at the Board retreat, the possibility of having a third-party consultant facilitate a strategic plan for Carmel Clay Schools as we look at long-range strategic initiatives such as redistricting, finance, funding, managing the ever-changing needs of the student demographic, looking at how we can incorporate technology into daily instruction on a more easily accessible basis, things that were validated by Advanced Ed last year when Carmel Clay Schools received their five-year accreditation. So as a result of that, in the goals for this year, we have strategic planning as an initiative that we have gone forth, and we're utilizing the services of ECR Consulting to do this strategic planning for us. As a subcomponent of this, redistricting is something that they are doing as part of the strategic plan, and it is a timely matter in that we want to make sure that we have this information to you, the Board, for consideration, and then to our community as we plan for next school year. So with that entree, it gives me great pleasure to introduce, from ECR, Gina Semenek and Jennifer Darling, her assistant. And I'll let Gina go through process and all the things that led up to this, and just to kind of remind us of our timeline for strategic planning. There'll be some surveys going out yet this winter and a report back late April from ECR as it relates to the status of the strategic planning for Carmel Clay Schools. Gina, welcome.
Is the mic on? Can you hear me? Is that better? I'm Gina Semenek, the Executive Vice President of ECR Group, and our firm is located just outside of Chicago. And just a brief background, we specialize in consulting for school systems across the nation. We have a couple of different divisions, one obviously Strategic Planning, and Jennifer and I lead that division. We have an executive search division where we help school systems find leaders from the superintendent and assistant stoops and central office personnel. Our team, we have a wonderful research analytics division which specializes in not only strategic planning, but looking at student growth and performance data and helping schools run a little bit more efficient or effectively and learning how to use data differently. So this strategic plan takes a very sort of scientific approach. It's values-based, so we start by understanding what the values are of all the key stakeholders and understanding what your expectations are, you know, what you think are priorities, and that sort of gets wrapped into your mission, your vision, guiding principles. And as Dr. Wall said, one of the first things we're looking at, just due to the timing, is this redistricting. Okay, so today, we have a preliminary draft report that we've presented to the Board, and there will be time for them to reflect and ask questions and comments as well as additional input. Now, we did receive input from many stakeholders. We came out here in December, and we started with interviews of each Board member and some key district personnel, and we held for two days, two and a half days out here doing focus groups, so I see some of you in the audience that I recall meeting. But we spoke with students, parents, teachers, administrators, community members, pretty much every stakeholder was represented, and not just around redistricting, but again, looking at the bigger picture. What do you value? What do you think's important? What are your expectations, you know, overall? This is an overview of the timeline, so here we are in January, February. Please stay tuned for surveys because we want as much participation as we can get, so I encourage you to take 10 minutes and fill it out, get your neighbors and friends to do it as well, because that really is what's going to just sort of wrap into what we've already collected in terms of understanding the perceptions. What's the lens that you view quality education through? What are the things you care about? And then that draft plan will be presented to the Board in April, and then moving forward, working with administration, and how do you make it come to life? That's sort of the big-picture process overall. So regarding the school boundary process, we took a look at a lot of, you know, archival data. We deflated the last couple of demographic studies. As I said, we interviewed and conducted focus groups. We looked at enrollment capacities, achievement reports, your goal reports, as well as everything that we've collected from the interviews and focus groups. We met with 136 stakeholders here in December, and that's what we took a look and analyzed to really develop recommendations. So what is, you know, what's the current issue? Sort of what's the current state? You know, what's the goal? And what we learned was that it's sort of been a pretty constant occurrence here in terms of the redistricting, that it's happened frequently, two, three years, and the Board and Dr. Wall, really, they were looking for something a little bit more long-term. And the stakeholders told me the same thing. They're looking for something that's a little bit more long-term. So that was our goal. We were tasked with that, to take a look at what are the considerations and priorities? Listen to the stakeholders. What's important to the stakeholders when going through redistricting? What are the things you want to consider? And then we obviously analyzed the projections and the enrollment and the current state and capacity. So some key considerations, obviously, the overcapacity was an issue, but geographic proximity as well. There was a lot of discussion that there were kids being, you know, bused for 30, 40 minutes when there was a school that they could literally walk to just through past, you know, redistricting. So geographic proximity was really one of the big primary concerns and things that, you know, people want us to consider. The feeder alignment, they wanted a long-term, you wanted a longer-term solution. Grandfathering has been discussed because historically, there's been grandfathering, so we want to get sort of a pulse on that and how people felt about that. And then, you know, what happens when you do have to redistrict? What's that transition process like? You know, how do you sort of smooth that process? So given that, our recommendations, we've brought three basic recommendations forward. The first recommendation is to look at assigning all the students who currently attend Orchard Park Elementary to attend Carmel Middle. Currently, those students go to Creekside, and you don't have the appendix, but in the back of the report, and you can take a look at, there's a map, and I think we'll actually have one in a few slides here. Actually, we do, right? Yeah. So currently, these kids are heading out to Creekside rather than Carmel in the blue, which is their closest area. So our recommendation is that all the kids in the yellow there in the Orchard Park District should be districting, districted such that they would attend Carmel. Okay? There we go. So Carmel Middle's the closest middle school for students in a boundary area. Parents of eighth-grade students would be permitted to choose to have their child remain, so if they'd like the grandfathering for eighth graders, we recommend that that be a choice for them for the 15, 16 school year, which is really the issue. If you look at the demographic study longer term, the numbers, enrollment numbers will start to decrease pretty rapidly after 17, 2017, '18, and they start to go down. But you're in a crunch for the next, you know, year or two. So again, depending on how many kids grandfathered, you'd look at some other opportunities there. For the recommendation two, assigning all students who currently attend Mohawk Trails to attend Clay Middle. Currently, these students are in the green area and some of that blue on the top right. They're split, so they're going to go to two different middle schools. Our recommendation is that all the students that are currently attending Mohawk to attend, am I on the right? Here we go. Currently attending Mohawk to attend Clay Middle, so that there would no longer be a split. Again, parents of eighth-grade students would be permitted to choose to have their child stay at Carmel for the 15, 16 school year. And then, recommendation three is, if it's necessary, it may or may not be, to, but if necessary, you can strategically select classrooms of students at College Wood and move certain groups or certain class or grade levels to empty classrooms at West Clay or Creekside Middle, which are located on the same campus. The real idea behind this is that you have this campus of three schools that are pretty close, and you have a lot of flexibility in how you shift those kids around. And if you think about just trying to keep them together on the campus, it gives you, you know, opportunities to say, maybe it's a fifth grade, maybe it's a particular program of kids that are shifted to the, you know, the middle school early or over to the other elementary school. Well, Creekside Middle is currently over capacity. After that first recommendation was implemented, it would have, it will have, you know, space available to do them. College Wood is over capacity with 824 enrolled this year. It's projected to continue exceeding capacity through 1920 school year with boundary changes. If necessary, assigning the selected classrooms, as I talked about, to either West Clay or Creekside where there's empty classrooms. I think the pluses to that are you're keeping peer groups together, you're keeping the neighborhoods together, it allows for consistency, it cuts down on the bus routes, the traveling on the buses, right? And obviously, you're going to adjust for the overcrowdedness. This is particularly appropriate as the current enrollment experienced at College Wood is projected to decline after the 17, '18 school year, starting in that year. With these three recommendations, that's going to give you a good five-year-out projection in terms of where you start to see those numbers drop off. So some of the discussion during the focus groups, we heard, you know, some stakeholders said, you know, "We're not opposed to the redistricting if it makes sense," but it was the constant turnover that was, you know, a struggle for families, and we understand that. This would allow pretty much, you know, some clean shifts that get the feeders aligned. It keeps the kids in the neighborhoods together. There's a lot of benefits to that in terms of, you know, if you have a school close to you, rather than riding on a bus, it allows kids to participate easier in after-school activities because they're close. You know, you see kids that are on a bus, they don't get home, and then to get back to a school for extracurricular activity is pretty difficult because they don't live by the school. So I think if you look in terms of, and this was a priority that we heard, where people are split down the neighborhood and, you know, they might play with the kids, but then they go to different schools. So that would allow you to, you know, continue those relationships and keep peer groups together. Now, this is, this is an update from the initial presentation that we sent to the district as of today, because there was some additional feedback on it, and there's 19 kids that are in three apartment complexes in the Orchard Park boundary area that are currently going to Woodbrook, and then they attend Creekside for middle school. Okay? So in our initial report, did not include this, but now, with Orchard Park being redistricted to Carmel Middle, our recommendation would be that the Board consider redistricting these 19 students to attend Orchard Park and then to Carmel Middle, so that they're together within their neighboring, with their kids in the same neighborhood. Orchard Park has capacity for over 100 additional students. Parents of fifth-grade students, you know, should be permitted to choose to have their child remain at Creekside Middle for the 15, 16 school year.
That should just say Woodbrook. Gina?
Woodbrook?
That's a typo.
We'll make that correction.
Yeah, that should just say Woodbrook.
Okay. You got that note, though, Gina?
That last bullet point, it should just say fifth-grade students in the grandfather clause. That should just say Woodbrook. That's just a typographical error.
We'll correct it.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Right.
Okay, so again, that's the map just showing yellow where Orchard Park is. Okay, we'll make that change. Thank you. So here, looking again at the capacity now, original report, we did not include the performing arts space, so this is going to be a little bit different than what the Board received earlier, because we did not include the performing arts space. We went back and added it in to get a more accurate picture of that for the middle school because it's because it's a little different at the elementary school. You're not going to go back and refill those classrooms. But in middle school, that might be different because there are different kids going in and out. So we did adjust this slide today to accommodate that. So here, you're looking at what the enrollment is for the 15, 16, currently without redistricting, and then projecting out to 2019, 20 without redistricting, and then the comparison with redistricting. So if you look at the capacities, you know, Creekside currently is where they're feeling the most, you know, the most pressure there. Projecting out by 1920, you know, all the buildings are well within their capacity range.
What she's referencing is the capacity, the first capacity asterisk there? Okay, that's the 15.
Yeah, the numbers in the first capacity column there. So how does it impact the overall performance of the schools when you look at school performance? So if you look currently, the percentage of students who pass, you know, I step by current, their current middle school, under the current boundaries, the first two columns, and then the second two columns are under the proposed boundary change. So you see there's very little shift in school performance overall. And then looking at the percentage of students receiving free and reduced lunch under the current boundaries and under the proposed boundaries. Again, minimal shift. You see the shift from Carmel and the shift from Creekside or Clay Middle. And these numbers, just to put this in perspective, you know, across the nation, 50% of students receive, are eligible to receive free and reduced lunch. In the state of Indiana, that's 49%. So you're not even on the radar for having any kind of a concern about any relationship to achievement here. In fact, there's a lot of research that we've seen in some pretty big studies that have been done in the last three, four years, that there's, you're not going to see any sort of a performance, you know, impact until you're well beyond 30% in a school. And given that the history of this district is such that you have very consistent curriculum, you have very consistent services across all the schools, and we learn that throughout, you know, our research phase and collection of data. You know, you're currently taking care of students individually and their needs individually, and we would expect that that would continue in this, you know, proposed change. Overall, these recommendations would affect a maximum of 3% of the district students. Proposed boundary changes address the current and projected overcapacity, and the geographic proximity, which is really a priority in what drove a lot of the recommendations. Minimizes the effect overall on education and social-emotional levels. You know, the social-emotional levels, when you think about that, there's an emphasis on that, and it's going to probably continue, and I imagine that'll be a big part of the strategic plan. How do you track that? How do you measure that? How do you make sure you're addressing that? I know that some of the recent middle school restructuring that's going on now with the middle school evaluation is going to link nicely into that, because you're adjusting the scheduling and the curriculum and building it in for the social-emotional piece. We believe that keeping the districts together, like the stakeholders had really stressed, is going to add to that. You know, the kids are playing together, they got their peer groups together, they're going to go to the same schools together, the feeders align nicely, and the supports are in place. Because you have, it's one of the few districts, and I'm in a lot of districts, and this is one of the few that I can actually say that you have rock-solid, consistent services and curriculum across your district. It's not easy to do. And you have high-quality teachers, and those are the things that matter, you know, that, you know, high-quality teachers in any strategic plan, when we pull the research, it's always a top priority. Hire and retain high-quality teachers and administrators. And then, you know, parental choice for eighth graders. So if you have, you know, if there's students in eighth grade, if the family, student and parents prefer that they stay there, we recommend that they have that choice. Okay, questions?
Thank you very much for a comprehensive overview, and we are opening this up for questions. I know a few board members had some questions, so I will open up.
Well, I'll start. Thank you very much. This is, whenever we talk about redistricting, it's always a tough time because it's your child. But we have to go about it with data. So I thank you for including a lot of data with this, because that helps our decision-making and then have our leaders and our teachers and our parents work with the transition part. I do have a couple of questions having to do with process first. You mentioned at the very beginning how you're working on the strategic planning process, and that'll come out in a few months, but that the redistricting piece came out first, even though it's reflective on the same information. Can you talk a little bit about that seemingly topsy-turvy?
Sure. Right, so our typical, if there was not a need for something in the immediate, you know, right now for redistricting, the typical process for strategic planning would be the exact same that we've followed thus far with the interviews and then the focus groups and then surveys. And then, we're analyzing your student achievement data. So the only thing, so we've done a lot of that upfront, and this report is, because of the time sensitivity that you needed to make some decisions about it, really looked at all the same data that we were looking at anyway. It's just that we wrote up a part of our findings earlier. So we have much more in terms of the stakeholder input and something, things, plus, around the values and the priorities and where they believe you need to focus over the next three to five years. So this is simply just, we stripped out some of the findings and wrote this report for you. But it's all the same data we would have been looking at anyway.
Okay, thank you. Question on 3%, about 473 students will be moved is what you predict, and that does not include any College Wood Elementary students that might be affected. Am I right on that?
That's, yeah, that's without the College Wood. The College Wood will, the flexibility there is whether you move select groups or not to one of the other schools.
Okay, thank you. You hit on some of the, I think Pam submitted this question, but on some of the apartments that are affected and that were actually placed into a different school because of the timing on their development. Were there any other, with the information you looked at, there are some neighborhoods being built right now, some on the far east, some on the far west. What kind of information did you, were you able to gather on those kind of developments?
I'm going to let Roger address that. We've got an update on that.
Okay, great.
Yeah, there are three apartment complexes in the northwest corner of Orchard Park District, and that's the three that we're talking about. There's a total of 19 students, as was mentioned in the report, in all three of those complexes. They were moved initially a couple of years ago because of the anticipation that there would be a lot more students come out of those apartments, and there was concern that it might overcrowd Orchard Park. So before people moved in, we thought, well, we would redistrict before they got there, then they wouldn't be moved. They would just have always gone to Woodbrook. So that hasn't materialized, and so now, if the recommendation is accepted for Mohawk Trails, those 19 students would be the only 19 out of over 7,000 elementary kids that would not follow their peers to the respective middle school. Now, to your question, there are, there's still some property, as everybody knows, in Carmel that has not yet been developed. That gets smaller and smaller, but that still is the case. So there are some plots out there, parcels out there, that are in various stages of being developed. Some haven't started, some have just started to get rezoning. There's a parcel, for example, in Westfield Boulevard that, just north of 96th Street, used to be a small golf course. And that's an 80-acre plot that is just now moving to the stage where they're, as recently as yesterday, I think, submitted a conceptual plan. Now, that doesn't mean that's what's going to be built there, and it's not specific yet. So for example, it shows some, I think about 146 single-family homes, and then some multifamily, but it could be senior homes, it could be condominiums. It does not appear, it's not like high-rise type of apartment buildings, but some of it's along the Monon. So that's an example where we don't believe that that will generate a lot of students when it's developed, and we certainly don't know how long it might take to be developed. We don't see it impacting this redistricting. We'll have much more insight in four or five years, but that's just an example. So we know that there's the much larger development up on 146 and River Road, for example. And that's kind of in the middle. There's certainly, there's now homes out there, certainly, and a number of apartments, but there's still quite a bit of, or quite a bit of property that still doesn't have homes on it. So we're kind of in the middle stage of that. So there are still areas like that all over Carmel, as there have been for the last 30 years. There's just fewer of them now. So as we've looked at that, we've not seen any development, as those examples that I gave, that we would have particular concern about in terms of this redistricting. The area on 96th, or on Westfield, for example, whatever students might come out of there would now go to Orchard Park. But Orchard Park has a fair amount of capacity yet. I think the report noted that, you know, we're about 100 under the capacity. And the projections with the demographer, which would not have included that development, except the demographer would have known that was, you know, undeveloped land. So that's, they certainly anticipate some type of development, but they don't know what it's going to be or when it's going to be. But that's an example where we wouldn't, we're not particularly concerned about whatever might happen there, given what the information we have so far, as it would relate to this redistricting.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah. One more.
Yeah, there was one other one that I would mention, and you can see when you go down Keystone that there's some work being done at the Mohawk, I think Mohawk Apartments, or Mohawk Hills Apartments. Prior to the recession, that was a project referred to as Gramacy Project. And basically, pretty much that whole development was going to be torn down and redeveloped into a whole variety of things. After the recession, that project's really gone. And now, what they're doing is they're renovating the existing buildings. And there's some possibility that they will eventually build higher-end units where the, again, that's another property that has a golf course. So, but again, we do not see that having a significant impact, at least in terms of increased enrollment, because if anything, if they renovate and raise the rent or the lease payments, that might actually reduce the number of students rather than increase them. So another example where we know there's some work going on there, but we don't, we're not particularly concerned about it as it relates to our capacities, that particular area currently goes to Forest Dale.
Okay, thank you. And then, if I could, oh, go ahead.
I just want to jump in and ask a question with regards to, since we're talking about property. It seems like there's a lot of property still undeveloped on the northwest side that feeds directly into College Wood. Was that taken into consideration when we decided, or when it was recommended that we do nothing with College Wood at this time?
Yeah, the short answer is yes. Our latest demographic study was updated in this last year. So the demographer would have, I'm not aware of anything particularly out there that has particularly changed since a year ago. So the demographer knew that that property was there in various stages of development and so forth. So it's not, if there was something where they, something had changed and they were going to build large, single-family homes, and then something changed, and now it's going to be multifamily, you know, that would be significant. But there, they're just continuing to develop what they had planned to build a year ago.
And then, really, the rest of my questions have to go with kind of this whole conceptual change as far as our schools, which schools are feeding into our middle schools. When the redistricting, when Creekside opened up and redistricting took place about 2002, 2003, around there, that's when we, at the time, looked at the three Title I schools and said, let's, you know, have one feed into one middle school, and the other in the next, and the other in the next. And so this is really, your recommendation's a conceptual change from that. And so I want to make sure the data supports that. And you hit on some of the things as far as a shorter bus ride and access to extracurricular activities. But I just want to make sure that we're not just totally dancing around, but looking at the whole social-economic factor as far as those Title I schools get extra resources funneled over those as an elementary school. Is that something we can, we have the flexibility for at a middle school level? And then, on the flip side, Creekside, that wouldn't be as diverse, the experience those kids would have with not as much diversity in their middle school. I don't really know my question, except that those questions are out there, and how do we weigh, because nothing will be 100% perfect, but how do we weigh that, and then how do we work with that?
If I could make a couple of comments, because I'm one of the few people around here that was here back in 2002. If you could put the map back up. What you said, Tricia, is correct. The current, currently, we have a title school in each of the three middle schools. However, when Creekside was built, as everybody knows, we went from two middle schools to three, and the farthest west school, of course, was Carmel. And so when we opened and built and then opened Creekside, somebody had to go to Creekside. And so as we looked, and basically, then, the student demographics, for the most part, had, somebody had to shift west. And so as we look at our schools and look at this map, Orchard Park, which happened to be a title school, shifted west, not because it was a title school, but because we needed to have somebody go to Creekside. And even at that point, I don't remember the number now, but it, when we opened Creekside, it opened with like 600 or 700 kids. So imagine if Creekside, or Orchard Park had not shifted, it would have opened with several hundred kids, less than 400 kids or something. So initially, we needed to move somebody to the third middle school, which of course also unloaded the two existing schools, which is why we built the third middle school in the first place. Now, it was, it did result in having one title school in each of the three middle schools. But also in 2002, the percentages of free and reduced lunch in those three schools has changed significantly since 2002. Carmel Elementary, for example, I would believe was close to double the percentage that it is now. And so while there, we have three title schools, there's quite a variation amongst those schools. It ranges from about 12% to 36%, with Forest Dale being about 26%. So that did happen, but it, we didn't look and say, well, we should put this school over there in order to have three schools. It was Orchard Park, you can see, if you didn't do Orchard Park, well, you'd have to go east past Orchard Park and then drive through Orchard Park to take another school to Creekside, which of course, wouldn't seem to make much sense. So that's kind of how we got to where we're at. And then, so when those, if those students move to Carmel Middle School, then, you know, certainly our intent would be to service whatever their needs are, as we do with all students in the district, as we have been at Creekside. It's also worth reemphasizing the one slide that indicates that there's not a direct relationship between a school that has a higher percentage of poverty and their performance level. As Gina alluded to, in communities where that poverty level might be over 50%, you start to see that relationship. But you don't see it here in any significant sort of way.
Okay, thank you. I'll give up my microphone, and thank you again, Gina. I'm not going to even try your last name, but.
That's okay.
Thank you.
She taught me, it's Semenec, Semenec. Pronounce it like it's S-E-M-E-N-C.
Just drop the i's.
You get Semenec.
I'll work on that.
Kathy?
I want to thank you for this, too. One of my big concerns was the geography of the transfers. It makes a whole lot of sense for Orchard Park to be going to a middle school that's much closer to the area in which they live. And I'm not too concerned about Title I, because we do work really hard in this district to make sure every child is served regardless of what school they attend. My question was, you mentioned, as we watch... My question was, you mentioned, as we watch College Wood on the west side grow and grow and grow, the possibility of sending groups to either Creekside or West Clay, which is right there on the same campus. Just to kind of clarify that, is that to like, we might say, okay, we're going to send the four sections of fifth graders over, and their classroom will actually be in this building, but they'll still be part of College Wood?
That's the idea.
So they would still be considered College Wooders, they just happen to have their room in another building?
Right, right. And if you were to do that in the middle school, they're there a year earlier, where you might take, you know, a particular program gifted...
But they're still included in all the activities of their elementary school. Okay, thank you.
And the historian Roger will inform us that we actually have done this.
Yeah, we actually, we actually did that. That was, you know, several years ago, we had near 1,000 students, I think, at College Wood. And I'm guessing it was, as I recall, it was before West Clay was built. And so that's exactly what, the decision at that time, that was the decision, was to put, move fifth grade classes over to Creekside, because it still had not grown where it's at. But it was very much, did not change the fact that that was, that fifth grade was still very much a part of College Wood. So it had no, other than, in some ways, it was like, instead of using portable buildings, we had classrooms just a little bit farther in an existing building that were very nice classrooms, in fact, new at that time. And so the fifth grade went there. Now, the difference is, that was for years, I recall, until we, and we, because we were in the midst of building West Clay, and so when it opened, then that wasn't necessary anymore. Now we're talking, we are talking here about a longer period of time, possibly. And I think it's worth mentioning that we have 824 kids at College Wood. That building has a design capacity of 775, so it's 50 over. And the 50 are essentially in the LGI. The large group instruction space at that school is, square footage-wise and so forth, is two classrooms. So, so it's basically because of the additional 50 students, the building doesn't have an LGI, because it's being used as a classroom. So now, the projection, which for next year is 10 more students, I believe, and the following year, another 10 or 12. And then the third year, it starts to decline. So if we're close on the projection, then it'll be two more years of some additional students, which may, and by the way, so everybody's in a regular classroom. It's not like we have music on a card, or, you know, some of those things that some schools have had to do. Everybody's in a purpose-built classroom, except for the students, the four, as four or five GT students, that are in the LGI. And so that's, so the school and the parents and the staff may feel like they would just as soon stay where they're at, depending on that growth. And if there is growth, you know, the projections aren't an exact science, versus, you know, using some space at Creekside. That's why we're saying if it's necessary.
Yes, to follow up on Kathy's question, I can't remember quite what they did when they moved those students over to Creekside, what they did with specials. Did they go back to Carmel? They went back to College Wood for specials, is that correct?
Yes, I believe they went back to College Wood to have their specials.
Okay, so if they moved this camp, the class over to West Clay, they could take advantage of the specials that are at West Clay, correct?
I'd say possibly. I think the if necessary is going to be determined where the numbers fall next year, because 10 kids over a building could be in a variety of grades. So the if necessary, when we staff in March, would prompt us to have those discussions, so the students would still receive specials as if they're in any other building.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is that a situation with which you would solicit parental feedback in deciding if you were going to move the entire fifth grade to another school? Or, because like you said, they might be perfectly happy, even though it's a little tight, but not moving might be the solution that they are looking for?
I mean, obviously, we talked to building principal, Kathy Olson, and all the principals, just to give them an overview. And they're going to be gathering feedback, Kathy will, from staff, and come back to us with the concerns, that challenges that they may face, and we want to be mindful of that. And I'm sure the feedback that we get, and Kathy gets, will represent the parent population as well. And we're very open about what those challenges may be. And our goal, as stated previous, continue to provide the services, as Kathy said, wherever the students are, so they have that equity of opportunity that we strive for all of our kids. And so we want them to be identified, what are some challenges, and what do we need to do to overcome those.
Other questions? Wonderful. Okay, well, thank you very much. And if we, well, if and when, because I know we will continue to have questions, we will send those to Nick, who might send those off to Gina and her team, or the rest of the team.
The intent, as we discussed this last spring, putting into the goals, is to have a third party. Thank you, Gina. Thank you, Jennifer, so much, and all the 136 stakeholders that were very candid. Some in the audience tonight, thank you for being here, and thank you for being a part of this process and ongoing. Our goal is to obviously give you an opportunity to digest this. We have a workshop, we will have a workshop topic. This will not be the topic, but if there are some general follow-up Q and A, I ask you to please send those to me, and we'll be able to then present thoughtful answers to those, as well as feedback that we're going to get from College Wood as Kathy meets with her staff and gathers feedback there. And then contingent on that review, our suggestion is to finalize the recommendation at the February Regular Action Meeting, just so we have a thoughtful opportunity to consider this, Q and A. And that also allows the buildings then to march forward with whatever needs to take place for our planning for next year. And just as a side note, with the middle school program evaluation really showing how we can work together as three middle schools in one district, all three building principals have been at all the parent nights together. So it's a shared presentation, common themes. We've also had very open discussion about, in the event we have some shifts, you know, in the redistricting, that there will be more intimate opportunities for any students and families that may be looking at a different middle school. We've always had the five to six, I believe we call Cookie Night. Continue those, but any and all other transitional opportunities that we need to do for our children and for our families, we will do that. But we were doing it with a mindful notion that these parent nights need to be similar. I know we've had activity nights, and those are building-specific, but we will schedule more, whatever it takes, to make sure that this transition is smooth, and the children are familiar with the building, and the parents as well. So those things have already been planned and are ongoing. Thank you.
Before we wrap up that portion, any other questions or thoughts that come to mind? Well, thank you very much. Moving on to announcements. Does anybody have any announcements they'd like to share? Yes?
It's not really an announcement, but it is a legislative update, and I'd like people in the community to be aware that we have received an Indiana School Boards Association call to action regarding the funding formula for schools. And apparently Governor Pence has proposed, on his $200 million budget, that only 100 million of that will go to public schools. So the other half will be going to charter schools and vouchers. And that gives the schools a 1.3% raise in the first year, and a 0.3% raise in the second year. And it is very important that if you agree with all of us, that that isn't going to fund our schools, that you contact legislators and let them know. Because this is, they are not funding public education like the state initially said they would do when they took away our property taxes, which used to fund the schools. So just a call to action for the community, as well as our school board. Thank you.
And the call to action that we have over there would serve that purpose, because we have all the legislators' contact information there. And as Pam and I met with the legislators, and then Tricia as well, upcoming, as we had a shift in board responsibilities in January, it's clear that schools like Carmel Clay are donor districts. In other words, the funds that are sent from Carmel to the State House supplant and take care of other school districts in the state. Not that we're opposed to that. Our charge is, we want the equity of funding to come back from the state then, in the general fund, so we can do what we need to do to maintain what we do. And we really are concerned about this money flowing away from public schools in general. And the state of the state address really alluded that he was, the governor was suggesting that. And that's very concerning, because we have the accountability measures of a public school that private and charter do not. And we think that's not an equitable way to do it. Thanks, Pam.
Thank you for bringing that up, Pam. I did want to share with the public. We did reorganize at our January workshop per statute. That was done, and there were a number of different, we had to vote on those. Now, we did decide as a group, ones that we certainly don't necessarily have to vote in public, but we are fulfilling other roles as a board. Kathy Fried is going to be serving on the Wellness Committee within the district, and that is a district-wide committee of parents, teachers, administrators, health professionals. We have Tricia Hackett fulfilling the Legislative Liaison position. Pam Nalls and myself are working on the Policy Committee. And you have been getting updates of special sessions, and special session is, we're having a policy meeting. But if we're receiving information by law, we have to publicize those. So if you come, fabulous. If not, that's okay, too, because we are just talking policy at 9:00 AM on a Friday. And Mr. Kerschner is going to be serving as our Carmel Redevelopment Commission representative. And I think that sums up the positions that we are fulfilling outside of those that we actually voted on at the... Okay. Okay. Well, then, seeing that there is no other information to share right now, meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming.